Good morning, I call a meeting to order. A joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. And our first item of business is to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fox, do you want to officially call your meeting to order? Also, just so we're... We're officially called to order. We'll work simultaneously. Go ahead. Thank you all for coming to our meeting. This is a work session between the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen. We have six different items on our agenda. We are going to do our very best to be out of here by 11 o'clock. It's a beautiful day, and we'd like to get through the things we can, have some good discussion, but also have the rest of the day ahead of us. Our first item is a report on the Olympic Village. It's just a presentation on some information, but we actually will not be having discussion of that this morning. And so, I think we have... Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we're handing that around now. Okay. And then I think I have a few brief comments.
So Brian's going to cover that part recently.
Okay. Sure. Wait till it... Have a copy? Pick a copy?
Do you want to see that copy?
Thank you. Okay, Brian.
Good. Hey, I can sit. As you know, this is a land use study that was conducted on behalf of the town by the Kipcod Commission. I believe we signed a scope of work about seven, eight, nine months ago, thereabouts. The idea was to come up with some concepts with regards to the 31-acre parcel at the corner of Route 28 and Route 151 that has been the subject of any number of town meeting articles for rezoning efforts for the past 35 years. It was an attempt to at least arrive at some sort of public consensus as to what might be the best path forward in terms of how we envision the land uses occurring on this parcel. And over time, it has come up with any number of suggestions, and you'll see it. The title is entitled "Olympic Village Reset Concept Study." The Olympic Village concept flowed out of a discussion of the local planning committee, the visionaries there. And it envisioned some sort of mixed-use recreational, institutional, together with some housing on the site. The commission staff did a terrific job. Thanks to them. And it's here for your consideration at a future meeting. Right now, if you can't get it out, take it home, put it on your nightstand, read it up, and we'll be seeing you in the future, especially as we address some discussions towards an eventual, perhaps, town meeting action. You never know. Especially for the Planning Board, it would involve, sure, some rezonings. For the Board of Selectmen, as you know, we have the right of first refusal on this parcel. Have had it for some 20 years. So there you go. That's in a nutshell of what it's all about.
Any very brief questions? All right, we'll move on to our presentation discussion of the bike plan. And I think we'll start with the hearing from the Bike Ways Committee.
That would be me.
Need to get your microphone, Scott.
Just carry it over. I'll get it.
Right there. Right to your left skull. Right there.
But I had some technical difficulties. This was on the computer some weeks ago when I gave this presentation with the traffic advisory committee. Maybe someone knows how to use this computer better than I do. Lately, I've lost it.
Can we get the lights to power up?
There's a noise, you know.
Okay, I'm gonna have to leave it. So unfortunately, you won't be able to see my PowerPoint, but maybe first of all, all of you had the town board members and the Board of Selectmen. And those who had a chance to look at it on the public website, had a chance to look at the plan. I want to point out that the plan is a result of nine dedicated members here of our Bike Ways Committee, many of whom benefited from a member of the Bike Ways Committee, knowledge of those who helped. We had some ad hoc help from the Five Thousand Bike Lab and the Ouija Spirit representing them, and also the Friends of Bike Ways Committee. But we've had some very skillful guidance from the Kipcod Commission, their transportation experts, and we've had mutual input in meetings with Peter McConney, engineer, Traffic Advisory Committee, the Recreation Committee, the Board of Health, the Local Comprehensive Planning Subcommittee, the Palma Police Department has given us great input, Chamber of Commerce, and the various village associations with even also the county and that way. So the bike plan, I think, I just want to forward, sort of open with the recognition that this is sort of part of sweeping changes that are really happening in transportation around the world, increasing the quality of life. It probably started a generation ago in Europe, where public transportation and bicycling and pedestrian concerns are really strong. And now it's taking hold in the end of Boston or New York City. You see it's taking hold in cities and towns all across the country. We've got bike share programs, and bicycling in general has markedly increased, the changes in road infrastructure. So now it's time to be a part of this change. We'd like to see our corner of Kipcod be a shining example, shining leader in advancing the quality of life that's associated with the letter in bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure, both for residents and tourists alike. So we aim to see that all our roadways are equally accessible to both bicycles and cars, and that they're viable transportation alternatives for the tens of thousands of people who are drawn to Kipcod and to our towns and villages. So one of the things that our Bike Ways Plan opens with is a vision. Falmouth is a great place to both live and to visit because its bike-friendly culture and infrastructure yield calm roads, clean air, and a healthy populace in a vibrant, sustainable economy. Now, there are barriers to this vision that we all recognize, I think. We've inherited some inadequate road accommodations over the years. They invite excessive speed. The travelings are much wider than they need to be. The shoulders are narrower. Simple paint can change that. We have, you know, sand and some disrepair on some of the shoulders of our roads, particularly along the shore side that is eroding and falling into disrepair. But I think we recognize too that intersections are a big problem. We've got older designs that are really meant for cars only, there's lack of traffic controls that will help bicyclists pedestrians cross those intersections safely. Sometimes poor sight lines, sometimes obscured by summer flowage. These are all things that we really need to work on, and I think that in some cases, the Main Street, Route 28 plan is hoping to address some of those. So more barriers, we really lack safe corridors for cyclists to navigate, especially east-west, but, you know, we've got this nice north-south one called the Shiny Sea Bike Way, but that doesn't eliminate the need for both Gifford Street and Sandwich Road and Old Farnsworth Road to also be good east, west, north, south corridors. We've been slowly chipping away at the lack of accommodations for bicyclists, like having parking here and there, wherever. Fortunately, with some CPC funding, we've gotten a little bit of traction there each year. But we have a cultural misunderstanding between bicyclists and drivers. We really need to better educate both bicycle drivers and car drivers about how to share the role, what the rules really are, and make sure that their responsibilities are equally shared. So all these barriers basically accumulate into bicyclists feeling unsafe, and this starts a really bad cycle. When bicyclists feel unsafe, then we have bicycle crashes. And if I had my slide up here, I'd show you something that's in the bike plan, this 43 crashes that are centered mostly around Route 28 and Main Street over the last, well, it's a three-year period from 2010 and 2012, according to Maskeot's records. But we know that a lot of things go unreported, there are a lot more close calls that shake up a cyclist and unfortunately dissuade them from getting on a bike again. So this starts a vicious cycle, really, of fewer people using their bikes for transportation. They get in their cars, so we have more auto congestion. When they get to somewhere to try to park, well, everybody else is in their cars and parking is scarce. The tourists get frustrated, they're gonna go elsewhere. And I think the biggest tragedy is that kids don't feel safe biking anywhere, let alone at the school. And if kids don't get comfortable bicycling, we're just starting to hold another generation of people that don't bike and are stuck in their cars. This could be part of the answer to our endemic obesity, too. So let's get kids comfortable on bikes, and everyone's safe and comfortable for them. Otherwise, we're just gonna repeat this cyclic generation of non-biking. So the Bike Ways Committee sort of approached our bike planning exercise with four Es in mind. There are typically classically three Es, but I think that the most important and fourth E is what we're doing today, extensive public engagement. And so we had, over the last two summers, we've had public meetings with the community, the Falmouth Library, gathering input with maps on the walls and people writing comments. And we hope to do some more engagement today. Ultimately, though, the three Es really are engineering, education, and enforcement. And I'll go through these very briefly. So when we speak about engineering, I want to talk first, because this is a very high level compilation here, about general principles. So first of all, we want to improve accessibility and safety. That means bike lanes and accessibility of our roads and crossings. We really need some new and improved crossings, and I'm gonna make, talk about some specific examples. And ultimately, we'd like to see wayfinding, so that cyclists know what's safest and what direct routes are through town. And something that our town engineers are very well aware of, we need to design streets for what's called complete streets. And this is a concept that's newly adopted throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country now, where roads need to be designed for public transportation, pedestrians, for cyclists, and not just for cars. And I would invite anybody who's interested to learn more about this complete streets concept, that on Thursday here in Falmouth, there's a free workshop, a 1-hour workshop, presented by Maskeot and their affiliates. I have information about the workshop, it's free as it says. Some of us on the Bike Ways Committee are gonna be there, I know Peter McConney signed up. It'd be great if somebody on the Planning Board and Select Board would also join us, and we could talk even more about that.
Time and location?
This Thursday.
Sorry? Time and location?
9:00 AM at Kunavest. But you need to sign up online, and I have the information here. So, complete streets. You can tell these very well, where that. Okay, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the education enforcement component of our bike plan. It's terribly, terribly important. We need to really have more outreach and education opportunities, both for cyclists and for motorists. We could do better at gathering data about how to mitigate risk. For instance, where are the speeding points in town? And do we need to set up more of those warning lights that warn drivers about their skis? If I had my slide to show up here, you'd see me and Patrolman Clifford Harris at our Bike Fest last year, and we hope to replicate this again this year. The Falmouth Police were very engaged in our Bike Fest and helped run some skills tests for kids in the bicycle course. Ultimately, we want to have a more attractive town for all seeking comfortable cycling, clean air, and less congestion. So for me, it's gonna be difficult without my slide presentation, but I'm gonna bore down into some of the specific engineering projects that are high on our list. We had 24 recommendations. We had 25 originally, but fortunately, our highest priority, the crossing lights at Locust Street were done before we finished, so that was great. But the, we'd like to see a network of preferred priority arterial roads, more bike lanes, warning lights at crossings, and east-west crossings, which described in the... You know, if you look at the list of 24, the number one on there is the extension of our already beautiful Shiny Sea Bike Way all the way to the canal. There's only half a mile in Falmouth, and it needs to be completely foreborn, has to pick over. The Kipcod Commission, Glenn Cannon is here. Glenn, can you wave to him? Is leading the charge on that. Glenn and Lev Malakoff from the Kipcod Commission were very instrumental in having this whole bike plan together. Number two and three on the list are crossings at Cattley Base. We'd like to, we have a crossing now there, but it's not signalized. We really would like to see it flashing lights there, we had already at Locust Street. And the other one, I'm gonna have to ask you, use your imagination, but the Shiny Sea Bike Path has something called the Fitzpatrick Connector. Somebody may remember, this is a dead-end spur that goes from the Bike Path to about 620 Palmer Avenue, right across from Gifford, I'm sorry, from Goodville Park. We'd love to see this linear parkway, we call it the Shiny Sea Bike Way, connected to all the other parks in town. So having, putting a crosswalk there with lights gets you to Gifford Park, and then it's not very, not a big leap of faith to put another crosswalk on the other side to Gifford, go up the sidewalk to Trotting Park, and then town owns land right through to Trotting Park Road, which would then get you to Tietiket. So we'd like to see this as a critical east-west path that's both off-road and kid-friendly, connect all these parts to families with small kids and kids of any age, who particularly feel more comfortable driving and biking without car traffic. But it also creates a commuter link, too, for people who want to have a pleasant and more car-free bicycling experience. One thing I noticed that this crossing, there's a letter in our files, and I think in the town files, too, 10 years old, that the town manager back then requested a DOT to help us, the town, find out how can we make this crossing happen. Let's not wait another 10 years to have this happen, let's have it happen this soon. I think we just need to propose something. Okay. One advantage of putting this crossing in sooner or later is that we're already have the speed reduced to 35 miles an hour there due to the construction. We'd like to see it stay there, make it a much safer place to cross as well, with lower speed. Okay, I'm getting close to the end. So the reasons, there's some very simple reasons and ethical reasons besides the higher philosophical ones of why we should adopt this bicycle plan in town. First of all, other than having the town Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board really discuss it, it's been fully vetted with most of the other committees that have any concern around this in town. Once we have a bike plan and a focus, it will help us focus on our grant writing and funding and implementation strategies, to do that in concert. We know we're gonna comply with complete streets, and so this will put us in better standing for competing for the state funds. And one, maybe intangible, but I think a really great veteran account would be if we could qualify as a bicycle-friendly community. This is something the Bicycle Committee applied for when we had the extension, when we put in the Shiny Sea Bike Way, back in 2010, but we were denied. We need to show some marked improvements, and we need to show that we have a bicycle plan. So now we have a bicycle plan, I think we're starting to make, we've already made some improvements by putting in sharrows and other bicycle accommodations and bike racks in the last five years. I think we have a really good shot at this if the town adopts this bike plan. It could be a tremendous boost of tourism. No other town in Kipcod is ranked yet as a bicycle-friendly community, just as ranking that's designated by the League of American Cyclists, Bicyclists. So I think that'd be a great boost of tourism, and something worth shooting for. And then, I guess, in our bike plan, the plans are only so good if they don't have implementation part in as well. So we spent an extensive couple pages just talking about how to implement the plan once we've got them in place. And I'm gonna highlight a few of the key parts. One would be to assign a town bicycle pedestrian board, somebody who answers to either the Pedestrian W or somebody in the Planning Board, where the focus would be on issues of, all right, what's the next grant writing opportunity, or what do we do in terms of prioritizing lane striping to accommodate bicyclists this year? We really need somebody that ultimately answers to the Select Board and is taking up the even more all-matters bicycle pedestrian. We think, given that the Shiny Sea Bike Way is such an economic generate, it's amazing to see how much activity there is in the summertime, how much traffic there is downtown here. We really need a line item in the budget for maintenance of that. We shouldn't wait every 30 years for a million-dollar grant from the Environmental Bond Fund to keep that, keep the maintenance up of that. I think $50,000 would go a long way to defer, you know, deferring those kind of maintenance items that we're faced with right now. So I'd love to see a line item in annual budget for trying to see bike way maintenance. I'd love to see the bike plan integrated into the local comprehensive plans, the transportation areas. I hope that that will be adopted by the Planning Board. And I hope that these general plans will also be adopted, the GPW's annual road maintenance plans, too. And we know that, you know, all the things we're asking for cost some money, some are tens of dollars, some are hundreds of dollars, but we can chip away little by little on these. And hopefully, this will be a living document. You know, we want to see this reviewed every three to five years. It's not gonna be a static plan, and I think if all the boards and committees engaged, we can make it better. So my final comment and question is, will the Board of Selectmen vote to approve and adopt a bike plan today, tomorrow, sometime soon? And I would call for your feedback and responses and questions.
First, I wanna, I'm sure the entire board will agree, just commend the Bike Ways Committee on the tremendous exemplary amount, using an E-word, of outreach and careful planning and engagement of all the available resources, and also looking forward for grant funds. And I particularly want to highlight something that you said in terms of connecting the parks, because I think an additional benefit will really be some, maybe not measurable, but some help in the goals of, for example, the opioid crisis. I mean, if we give kids, for example, especially teenagers, who, you know, might want to get to the new skate park that the Falmouth Together We Can is working on, I think that connector is gonna be particularly important, and I think that's one example of coordinating efforts that you've undertaken. So I, you know, I'd certainly like to see, you know, as part of a future vote on a plan, I really would like to see that prioritized, as you mentioned, you know, and it's, there's been an effort for a long time in the two connectors, both at Trotting Park and on the other side, going through. So I just want to, again, thank you and really highlight that particular aspect, I think is, would have multiple benefits.
Ms. Martin?
When I was coming to this meeting this morning, I was thinking about the agenda and thinking about the conversation with the Bike Ways, and some of the things that I wrote down is I think we should have a sign, as you are entering Falmouth, to say that Falmouth is a bicycling, or whichever word you use, friendly town. Please give respect, or show respect. And I think there should be more notice that this is a bike-friendly town. And the other part of it, that when we're talking about how our roads are, and they need to be expanded, were roads that were built for cars only, and that's, everyone knows that. In thinking about the residents who are on the roads are of a certain age, and they're not accustomed to driving with bicycles and everything else that is on the roads with them. So in everything that you said in your plan seems to fit the whole idea that you understand the roads need to be expanded, we need to have better signs, we do need a lot of paint. I thought that was a great sentence, that can be taken care of with a little bit of paint.
Paint is cheap.
And I thought, well, that's a good thing. So in everything that you said in your plan, seems to fit the whole idea that you understand the roads need to be expanded, there, we need to have better signs, we do need a lot of paint. I thought that was a great sentence, that can be taken care of with a little bit of paint.
Paint is cheap.
And I thought, well, that's, that's a good thing. I was in California just within the last few weeks, and they're all on bikes, but it's the look of it. They have places, they have areas on the road while those cars are moving. And, and, I mean, and it connects, and it goes right down the coast. So things are possible, but because we're built in 1600s, and because California can have those long straight roads, in thinking about it, I think you're doing a fabulous job with what you have to work with. But again, it's one more of the stars that Falmouth has, is everything that you presented this morning, and I thank you.
Ms. Kerfer?
Scott, I think you will be pleased to know that we have to take the transportation element of the local comprehensive plan to town meeting, but it's ready to go there. We have to have the selectmen vote on the wording. Now, as part of this local comprehensive plan element, we are asking that such funding as you asked for with the Shining Sea Bike Way be a line item budget every year. And it just be incorporated, no question. And that the whole concept of the Complete Streets is in there, too. So we're, we're working towards that already. And the other thing is that the transportation presentation that will come up later is incorporating a lot of what you're asking for along Main Street. It becomes very difficult along Main Street, as you pointed out. There are many challenges. And also, for many years, I have wished that there would be a sidewalk all the way down to Woods Hole. Now, that brings my question up here. When you are giving estimates as to costs, it appears to me that there would have to be some land takings. I do not know the width of the road. So there'd either have to be land takings or extensive fill to get such a sidewalk going down, and/or, I should say, going all the way down to Woods Hole. I think that would be of an incredible benefit to the town if that could be a really rather top priority, and it's further down on the list.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, that was a great presentation even without the slides. So in areas where you're on the highway, of course, you'll have to convince the state to fund their own improvements. But in areas where it's town roads, we'll probably have to pay our own way. But maybe it could be possible that that can be funded through the Chapter 90? I don't know if that's possible. It's a road improvement, or?
I believe so. That's in the local comprehensive plan as well. The town certainly has that.
So we may not have to fund separate funding unless we're in areas like cutting through a park or something?
Could very well be part of Chapter 90. Mr. Fox?
Well, one thing that's easy to do, I think we could do right now, just as far as, anytime the planning board's looking at a site panel review, we should have a check off, is it, are we taking the bike path and bicyclists into consideration, whether it be parking or everything? Just have it be a checklist on our decision when we go through it. We could put it on there now, and that way it'll be considered at every time, every subdivision, every site plan will at least look at it and see if there's an opportunity. We just do that pretty easily. I think we just did it.
One of the components you mentioned was education, which I think is probably the top component. Because you go to cities, I have family in Copenhagen, people there know the rules. You know, you, you don't dare go against the rules. And here, you see people, I've had people on Woods Hole Road driving against traffic on bikes and having them too wide. So there, there needs to be a lot of education for the cyclists as well as the motors. So I applaud that effort, that we need to get that done.
Ms. Hurst?
Yes, nice, nice presentation, Scott. I looked it over, and I'm hoping, I'm looking at the latest version, January 6th of this year. The very first paragraph on your executive summary, it talks about reducing motorist speed and installing wider shoulders. Well, we've talked about a lot of the physical aspects, but reducing motorist speed sounds to me like that's gonna be a sticky issue, and how you're going to accomplish that.
This is based on the fact that most motorists are exceeding their open speed limits.
I understand they are. So I'm, I'm saying, you know, how do we accomplish reducing motorist speed?
I think one of the key traffic calming things we could do, and we're restriking our roadways, is to bring those to 10 to 10 and a half feet. We have 12 and 12 and a half feet wide travelings that invite accessories. If you narrow those traffic limits, the end of the stripes, it has an inherent calming effect of slowing, drive it down to the public speed.
Okay, that might, yeah. And then physically publishing reduced speeds, and I mean, getting the approval to reduce a speed on a certain area, that's gonna be a little sticky, but I mean, it can be done.
It can be, if I do it right, but it's not something that's common in driving. I think we can do a lot with, as I said, with the paint, and also those flashing lights on the straighter ways where people have the speed limit now.
I also thought, you know, occasionally you'll see a policeman on a bicycle, and in the summertime, I hope that maybe they could increase that presence of policemen on bicycles.
I think there should be stopping cyclists who are riding on purple ground roads, et cetera, and issuing warnings and, you know, remind people they need to have their lights on the back of their bikes when they're biking at night. You know, we have a, we have a seasonal working group of people who come through here in the summertime, frequently use bikes because they come here for a short while. I know other towns, the police do a sweep early in the season to alert those cyclists that their bikes aren't properly lit or they should be wearing helmets. We need, through the bike lab and through the DeKalb healthcare, we have helmets we can give people too. We'd like to, you know, we can do a lot to make bicyclists safer with the tools we have already, but we need a, a police force as well as assistance groups to educate these bicyclists.
When, on page two, you talk about you prioritize, you rank the, the projects, and you also have a cost estimate there. It would be nice if you took maybe like number four and number six are only $2,000 to accomplish. If you could get those done right away, even though they, they jump out of, out of line in the ranking, but they're not that far out of the ranking, it would, you would show that, that this thing is being implemented and it's a start. And then you could advertise that in the town and use that as cannon fodder for getting some of the other funding from, from the mass and so forth.
Yeah, the rank of priority isn't necessarily rank, we expect them to be done.
Yeah.
Number one, extending the bike path, we don't have much control.
Yeah, I understand, right.
Your point is, well, let's chip away at ones that are, that are dual right away. Yeah, we wanna have as many successes as we can.
The sharrow espe, the sharrow concept, that's pretty interesting. I didn't realize that there was, there's already one in Falmouth, is there? Did it say?
There's somewhat, there's some on Cattie Lee Base here, and I'm sure.
Okay, that, I guess, expanding that. And then the last thing, my comments are, on page 24, it talks about, you start talking about the implementation of the thing, which is why we're really here, and.
Where the rubber meets the road, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah, right. And also the buck stops here. You list about, I think there's nine or 10 things there, and those are great. I, I would like to see possibly your Bike Ways Committee get together with the, your, your entire committee. And designate somebody responsible for all of those nine particular items. I know you said one of them is create a staff position. So to create a staff position, then you have to go to the town manager. You know, and put, put a name or a, or a person, or a committee, or a department, or someone who's responsible for each of these nine things, so that they can, so that it just doesn't end up on a shelf somewhere. And somebody, somebody takes that particular concept forward. And then, and your, one of your comments is to have an annual report. And you could have those nine or 10 people stand up and say what they have done with their portion of the, of the plan.
That's what we need. All right, thanks very much. Any other comments?
This is just a question, because I'm a driver, and I have not used the bike path where the flashing signal is on Woods Hole Road. But I can tell you as a driver, probably the majority of the people who cross do not use that signal. It's wonderful to have it when it's there and people actually use it. Is there a sign on either side of that, on the bicycle path, that says, "Use the signal to cross"? I don't know, because I haven't walked it.
There is a sign that directs people to the button, but it doesn't compel them to use it.
It's on, it's sort of on the button. I'm wondering if a little bit down the path, if it could be a sign saying, "Use the flashing light to cross". I mean, last night, the bicyclist didn't use it, but fortunately his wheels and he, he was totally outlined in fluorescents. So I saw him, but there's been somebody crossing there. It was dark, dark clothes. Good brakes helped.
Paul?
Can I interject one item? Pardon me, Paul, just to, on the same topic. One of our challenges is bicyclists don't stop there, they should.
I know they don't.
If they stop there, they're supposed to push the button. My guess is the cyclist you observed blew right through the roadway on the Shining Sea Bike Way, endangering himself and the motorists as well. And that's part of the educational component that I know Scott and, and friends of Falmouth Bike Ways and the Bike Ways Committee have talked about, so it's an ongoing process.
No, a number of them have stopped, they don't use it.
Pardon me.
Mr. Driver?
Just a brief comment. It's a good presentation, even without your slides. I attended a few of the Bike Ways Committee meetings and looked through the report, and I would encourage this group to endorse that, particularly the bike-friendly community. I think it's an important designation for the first on DeKalb.
Edison?
I mean, from my perspective and my experience, this is really kind of a no-brainer. Because if you look at an overall public health issue, I mean, almost all of our public health issues really recommend exercise as a compensation for some of the things. Educational engagement at the younger ages, ward off depression as people grow older, and then even warding off dementia in elderly. The only thing that seems to have had a significant effect in those benefits is exercise. And I think to the extent that we can make this community exercise-friendly, in particular in the bicycling of the community, it gets people out, most people get some pleasure out of being outdoors. This is, I think, just a part of this community and should be part of the culture between to promote this kind of access and use of our natural environment, if you will.
It sounds like both committees are ready to, at the next meeting or upcoming meeting to approve it, so. We don't have the agenda as for a vote today, but I imagine it'll happen very soon. Thank you. And one, just, because I know there's, there's not much of public comment, and people have fresh ideas, I'm gonna pass around a comment sheet that we can provide with, for the planning boards at some of the. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is a presentation from McMahon Associates on Main Street, Scranton Avenue. Give it a go. There's a USB port on the right side.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Callie Mavero, special McMahon Associates. I'm a resident special engineer in Palmdale, Massachusetts, and also a town resident. You've been working with the town, wherever I am here, on Route 28, Main Street, Transportation Master Plan. You've been in front of the two forwards twice already. Last time I was here was, I think, late in the fall, where we presented a list of recommendations for the 10 intersections as part of our master plan. Today, I am here to provide an update. Since that time, we included the intersection of Route 28 at Scranton Ave. So that's, one of my focuses here is just to give an overview of that and the whole intersection as part of the overall master plan. So some of these slides may look familiar, so we just added the new intersection. So this is, this is a quick summary of traffic volumes. They were pleasured by the Cape Cod Commission back in 2012, and they were in the summer, so in June. And we just show here that this is the, the volumes during the peak hours, so in the morning, in the afternoon, the community peaks typically, what's going on at that intersection. One thing that we presented throughout the previous meetings was, what happened really in Falmouth is, you kind of have a peak, you don't really have distinct peaks as you do more in a suburban area, where, you know, traffic volumes get very heavy in the morning, and then kind of lessen during the day because everyone's at worker's school, and then they come back up as everyone's commuting home. What happens here in Falmouth, especially in the summer, is everyone gets out in the morning and stays out. There's a lot to do in Falmouth beaches and, you know, shopping on Main Street. So you see a pretty consistent high volume, once it starts in the morning, continues throughout the afternoon, and then starts to decline. So we don't, usually you have two or distinct peaks. So that's something to keep in mind, that a lot of these recommendations will benefit users throughout the day. We also looked at pedestrians and bicyclists. So those previous volumes were, were vehicles at the intersection. We counted pedestrians as well. There is a large crossing on Route 28, mainly, might be because of the harbor area, people getting up to 28, to the, you know, commercial area and hotels. As well as bicycle volumes, they were present at the traffic counts. The fall was the highest in the afternoon, that's the worst season of the afternoon, that you are heading southbound, so into town. And this is the crash history. This one has all of the intersections on it, but we'll be focused down on Scranton Ave. That one was a high crash location, had 24 crashes over a three-year period. This is all data from MassDOT in the state, and the bottom number was the ones that, of those 24, that related in injury. So the rest were just small offender, offender, and just a car. But it is above average, so that's something that we need to note, that there's potential safety problems at this intersection. And then this is the traffic operations. As traffic engineers, we define traffic operations in the term called level of service, LOS. It ranges from A to F, similar to ratings, school, where A being the best, F being the worst. It's based on a vehicle delay, so how long you're waiting at, you know, your stop line or your signal to safely enter the intersection. One thing to note is, not unlike in school, we don't strive for LOS A, because it's just not realistic. Because then we'll have five lane roadways, it'll be huge, you know, it's just not practical. We know we're an urban setting, we know we're in the middle, and we have limited right-of-way. So we need to balance users as well, so we need to balance pedestrians and bikes. So we try to strive for the yellows, the C's, the D's. So it's, you know, people have an average delay to enter the intersection. We don't just keep, you know, higher speeds speeding through. So when we look at Scranton Avenue, it does have some problems. LOS E in the morning, and then LOS F, F in the afternoon, very, very long delays. And LOS F starts at an unsignalized intersection, over 50 seconds. So that's when it starts to come, people are waiting there too long, they may take an unsafe gap in traffic, and get a little more frustrated. more frustrated. This second graphic, it didn't really change too much, but we looked at existing conditions. The counts were from 2014, and then we did a 10-year horizon. We looked at what can happen to traffic and operations in 10 years. So, we worked with the town and the KFC Commission. We grew the traffic volumes by 1% per year to just account for development, increased population, and just to see what will happen. So, the intersection can't get any worse than the red, but it's going to get worse with longer delays. So, then now we look into the fun part for traffic engineers. We kind of think like, what's going on? What's wrong? What can we do? For this intersection, it is a four-way intersection. It has the drag center as the fourth leg coming from the north into the intersection, although that is pretty low-volume. Turning movement is what we found. The main movements are under 28 and then Scranton Ave. We looked at, what can we possibly do to this intersection to improve it? Now, we'll go through what kind of came to top, what, these are the things that we call theta plus. We looked at putting anything around a roundabout in here, but there's just very limited right-of-way, so that wouldn't fit, so that kind of fell off the drawing board. And then one other thing we thought about was maybe we may start now a one-way roadway, either in either direction, but we figured that might have too much of a detrimental effect, you know, at least the harbor, you have the Queen and businesses, so that one did not move forward. And these are just some of the, we felt that might complement each other. The left turn at Scranton, it could be done temporarily to C, you know, signage or striping, just strip it, you know, more of an angle, say, enrichment only, instead of doing a big infrastructure curve and everything, to weigh if that's something that would help that intersection. But I think when we look at this intersection, the two might go well together, but again, there is probably an education signage enforcement issue with restricting movements at Scranton Ave, so something to take into account. So, that's, those are the slides I want to present to refresh your memory, present Scranton Ave, refresh on Falmouth Heights Road, because I think this is an area that you guys are really looking to investigate further. So, I'm happy to get to more questions.
Just one last comment on that left turn only at Scranton Ave. I think people then are going to just cut through the 711 and it's probably going to be worse.
Yeah. The left, no left on to Main Street from Scranton, sending people around Robbins Road. You've got the ferry users crossing that road, and you have them en masse crossing that street there, and trying to make a left-hand turn onto the Heights Road, I don't think would work either. Wouldn't a, and also too, I've been there where the traffic, even just to make, on Robbins Road, making a left onto Scranton Ave, can be all the way down to East Marine and onto the Heights Road. So, I mean, there's a lot of traffic on Robbins Road already. Wouldn't a four-way stop at Scranton Ave, if you're going to put lights there, wouldn't a four-way stop be a short-term solution to that?
You typically don't want to do a four-way stop on an arterial, Route 28, because an arterial roadway carries very heavy volume, so I don't think that would cause undue delay there. Something you could investigate, but that's not a typical treatment you see anywhere on Route 28.
Yeah, it isn't like Main Street's a highway, so to speak. It might be termed that, but...
Yes, termed that because of the long...
But it's actually narrower than some residential roads.
I completely agree with Bob's comment. Diverting to Robbins Road would be an impossibility. There's high accidents on the corner because people get really sick and tired of waiting there to make a left to go, and they, I've seen one happen. I was right there when it happened, too. They get tired of waiting, and it has to do with ferry traffic. And I have been there when, in both directions, Robbins was completely blocked, corner to corner. So, I don't see that as one to do.
But there is a, the only thing about that left-hand turn is it almost is an optional restriction, that if Jim's waiting there for 30 seconds to get out to take a left, with this option, he could say, "Actually, I'm just going to take a right, go around the roadway," and choose to do that sometimes when you know the traffic is going to move faster than that.
You need, you also need to take a look at that when the Island Queen is going, okay? Because they have a parking lot on one side of Scranton Avenue, and they walk down Robbins Road, and when they're trying to get to the Island Queen, and they have their gate open, there's a line trying to get into their parking lot, it chokes up the whole street. It's going to really get to be crazy to try to get through there. You'll have people getting in the left-hand turn, can't do in that. You need to look at the peak hours, especially with the Island Queen, and see what's going on at that time, because it's really crazy.
The only other regional location I can think of that instituted a four-way stop is in Hyannis or Centerville at Strawberry Hill Road. It's not 28, but they changed that years ago to a four-way stop. It took a lot of adjustment, but it seems to work, different volumes.
West Main Street, Strawberry Hill with the Hyannis Honda.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's possible. That is a Route 28, but I think that, yeah, the long-term solution is a traffic signal. There might be a temporary implementation period with four-way stop. That's what we want to look at. There is a, it's a challenge with a lot of, this section of Main Street has a lot of stop, little stop, minor controlled intersections, so it's a balance of what you want to do. People sometimes will have to wait to get out of intersections. It's the nature of an arterial roadway, so it's balancing what's the priority, is maybe it more of a late street, trying to improve. I think we need to improve operation with some of these intersections along the two weeks or two-door intersections, and as well as have safety issues, so...
On the short-term solution you gave for Scranton Avenue, did that involve also going to the wider, the 10-foot path?
Yes.
And so, to go to that short-term solution, the short-term solution, could we do that 10-foot path where you described in the, or is that just it takes too long, it's easy, you don't consider that a short-term solution?
Right. It's just more of a funding and the infrastructure for digging up the roadway.
Because you certainly could do that short-term with the 10-foot path, and then add the signalization later, because you're saying it is just, almost the roadway is already set up in place for it, it is just getting electrical in there.
Right.
If you could do this and the roundabout, and then take a look at it again, once you've done those changes, say, "All right, well, maybe we now go to a four-way stop or to signalization after we checked it out."
Yes.
Sue?
You know, just from a broad planning perspective and taking off on Jim's point, I think we have to be very, very careful conceptually to make our plan very broad. We don't want to plan just for the visitors. We don't want to plan just for folks who aren't working anymore and, you know, who are, or who are just visiting. We want to include people who, you know, have to get to work, who are on deadlines, who are multitasking, you know, moms who have kids. I mean, we really have to, you know, for example, if an intersection has a signal, we can regulate that. We can, you know, turn it off when it's not needed, you know, the police do that all the time. And, you know, I think it, just in terms of, you know, we're trying to focus on sustainability and, you know, attract young families to town so that, you know, we prosper longer, we have more jobs, that kind of thing. I, you know, I just think the solutions really have to be flexible.
Just on those solutions, the timing of it is on both of these. If there's any way we could make a decision on these today, it will then actually tie in very nicely with some potential state funding and also with the roadwork we're going to be finishing up following the Little Pond Sur project, so these would be two. Wouldn't be a bad idea to be able to make some decisions as to what we want to do with these today.
Mr. Chairman?
Paul, excuse me. Go ahead. Question, Route 28 is a state highway.
Correct.
And what's the process of getting endorsement of the nasty, particularly narrowing of roadways and potentially putting in...
This part isn't state.
Sorry?
It's not state until we get to the Falcons Road.
Yeah, you're right, but with that, I think the Bikeways Committee introduced that, that MassDOT's going complete streets right now completely, so we're looking at improving for all users in that workshop that's coming up. I actually already attended one of those. They have a funding program to reduce the width on their roadways as well. They may not go down to a 10 because it's, while their roadway is near, they accommodate tractor-trailer trucks. I think more, probably elevens are probably more practical, maybe on a state-owned roadway, but they're definitely open to the type of improvement, so it's great to see that that's coming through.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just interject, we had a brief conversation on a staff level over the last couple of days on some of these concepts. That involved, of course, Brian Curry, town planner, and Peter McConerty, Deputy Public Works Director and past town engineer, as well as Ray Jack. And our thoughts, and I welcome Ray's comments as well, Mr. Chairman, if that would be appropriate, would be for the board to consider this roundabout suggestion within the realm of the doable, within the existing right-of-way, as well connected or complemented by essentially line striping improvements in the Scranton Avenue intersection, so that it would be, those would be more of the range of the short-term possible rather than long-term expensive. But it could be built upon, I think, along the lines that you just commented upon, and that's what we would, I think, seek to get some direction from this board. The roundabout looks like it is reasonably doable, at least a portion of it. Right-of-way acquisition and so on, and some greater expansion may take longer, but at least the concept within the right-of-way would be something we feel we could explore along with some painted lane improvements in Scranton Avenue. And Ray, I don't know if you wanted to make a few additional comments, but that's in order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jack?
Thank you. First, let me make a distinction here on a lane width, because you just mentioned 10 feet. 11 feet is difficult, and I know we've worked with the Bikeways Committee for a number of years in order to determine how much we're going to constrain a lane in order to afford having lanes for the bike way. So, if you really want to know what a 10-foot lane is, everybody here has been over at one bridge. That's a 10-foot lane. It's scary, it's narrow, and it's risky, and I would never go at a 10-foot lane anywhere for that reason, but on any of our arterial roads. I just wanted to give the board an overview because, as Mr. Suso indicated, hope today is that there would be a, on something to be able to move forward with. From a conceptual perspective, I think that Dan correctly identified many of the issues, provided a number of range of opportunities for solutions in coordination with the multimodal aspect of the future roadways. So, on the plan itself, I would agree that this would not only enhance the attractiveness in that area, I think it would be a dramatic aesthetic improvement. One of the things was not mentioned in the report that I felt was important is many people come here, and I'm not just saying necessarily the first-time visitor, but even people will only come here once a year, maybe only on a short stay. Whichever direction they're coming on Main Street, they pass where they want to go. So, they need to be able to turn around. And generally, if they're a smart driver, they're going to make a left turn first so that they can pull out facing traffic, coming with traffic. So, they're going to be crossing traffic, which is going to be delaying traffic. This provides that opportunity where they know there's a roundabout ahead, they can safely do 180-degree turn, so it adds that benefit as well. I do believe this is probably a very good solution for that particular intersection. I think that most would agree, Dillingham is a significant problem for anyone trying to cross that street. Our population is becoming more and more senior, and it takes a little bit longer, they're not quite as reactive, to be able to adjust the traffic conditions, and we have the senior center, and that is a range of senior centers that we have in this geographic area, not just to mention the atrium, but we have others as well. So, with that in mind, I think that there are a couple areas, such as Dillingham, that ultimately will wind up being signalized. At least this way, we can prepare for that during a final design, whereby we can put in whatever conduits are necessary, make the necessary roadway adjustments in order to be able to accommodate that, straighten out that slight offset, which is really actually easy to do at Dillingham. With regard to the area out of the schools, our school administration building, the two primary recommendations along that corridor, as well as that intersection, were the roundabout concept for the intersection itself, as well as dual-turn lane for the remainder of the corridor. I think they're both good opportunities to look at more seriously in the future, but I don't think that we necessarily have both of them at the same time. And the left, the dual-left turn lane in a busy area like that can be difficult, but the traffic problem in that area really centers around the morning, quite frankly, and it has to do with McDonald's, the Express Mart, and people making left-hand turns coming into town because they want their morning coffee, and that's where they're going to get it, or they want their sausage and muffin, and on the right, I don't think donuts going further south. So, there are periodic times where we'll have a backup into queue going all the way from Jones Road that's coming back up into that area, but generally speaking, a lot of that congestion is really due to those conditions right there. So, I don't think that the board really needs to decide one way or the other. There's a couple options on the table for that. But I mention all of this because it's important to be able to move forward. About a little over three years ago, I had played under the state, a request under the state transportation bond bill, we reported that opportunity, and Mr. Suso and I had a good discussion about it. We put Main Street in there because Main Street is falling apart, and we have a number of different issues that we know need to address as far as traffic conditions. But one of the primary reasons is really that Long Pond Pump Station was built in 1898, and the main feeding of this building right here is 1899. That main is ready for an imminent catastrophic failure, all right? It is not intended to service and monitor the site, so we need to replace that with 16-inch main. So, we have already been planning for Bummer Avenue at the Oxtup, which is 18,000 feet, so we're over three miles of 16-inch main. It's not going to be easy, it's not going to be cheap, but that main needs to be replaced before we do any roadway improvements out there that ultimately might wind up failing. So, that's a multimillion-dollar project, probably looking at anywhere from six to eight million for the water main itself, and then coming on heels of that would be Main Street, which will rip three miles of that whole corridor area up. So, that's where this comes into play. This was the beginning, coming on heels of the transportation bond bill. Under that transportation bond bill, the state accepted it under the bond bill. We would likely have to continue it onto a subsequent bond bill in order to maintain the viability in a realm of about $8 million, but they will pay for no infrastructure. They are not going to pay for the water main. And as far as the corridor area goes under the bond bill, there has to be an improvement, not a resurfacing. So, we can't use the money to just build down Main Street and do a mill in an overlay. That's not going to be considered viable for the funds. So, this was necessary in order to start moving that process with the state forward in order to keep those funds in queue so that it will be a good investment on the town side, we would have to pay for the water main itself. But we would always have to pay for the water main, and without that transportation bond bill, we're going to have to pay to fix Main Street. So, I think that it is a good investment for the town to do the water main. It's a good opportunity with the state, and since the state owns the majority of that whole corridor area, that is one of the reasons why it fell right onto the bond bill. It is in their best interest. It's a state highway, so we will be using their money to dig their road, and it makes perfect sense. But that's not going to go on forever, so we're looking at probably the next three years in order to try to get all of these things moving. And believe me, I am not looking forward to ripping up Main Street. They have the wall of construction we just had, but I do believe it's important, and if the board could at least look the concepts... But I do believe it's important, and if the board could at least look the concepts of the plan and maybe, uh, a roundabout at this intersection here, it will put us in the opportunity, specifically Public Works, because the project will move into design now, where it would come to us, and we'd be able to start with the water main, the street improvements, and put that plan together, and then, that's going to be a process as well. So your decision today would not be necessarily definitive because at that time we have to involve the state and the whole, there's a lot of businesses out there that are going to have some skin in the game. So there are going to be a number of meetings as we move through final design that will result in changes and enhancement to the plan. Multimodal paths are great, I'm not necessarily sure that that's even necessarily something that the bike lanes would favor over having lanes in the roadway, because even this report recognizes, put in the multimodal lane, the experienced bikers are still going to be in the road. They're more comfortable there, if the conditions are good for them, and I think that that might happen. So there's still a lot to be talked about, a lot to be decided, a lot of things to do, um, and both boards will have that opportunity as we move through and go into preliminary design and then final design of what the improvements are, and then a much better handle of what the actual costs are going to be.
I want to go ahead and make the motion, as recommended by the town manager, for the roundabout as well as the striping. And my question in that regard, is, is that sufficient to address the water main issue, or do we need to?
Yeah, it's a great question. So Ray, can you, um, jump in on that?
No, that is, that is sufficient in order for us to be able to start moving forward.
All right, so, so moved.
Thank you.
Is that also in getting rid of the little median at Scranton?
The little median at Scranton? I think that was...
We, uh, we anticipated that being looked at as part of the striping improvements with the help of Public Works.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Well, can I ask Ray a question? If we put the roundabout in prior to replacing the water main, is that going to be an issue, or is that a relatively modest modification of that intersection?
No, the, the, the roundabout would actually come after the water, all right? But this would be, be one of the first legs of a project. My, my order of progression, I would think, for the water main would be from west to east, and the same, similar progression on the reconstruction efforts here. So this will be one of the first things that's yet done as far as the roadway improvements coming on the heels of the water.
With the exception of potential of the striping, I mean, if the striping is Scranton, it could be short-term.
Can I ask what his projection, time projection is for this? I mean, how long are we talking about delaying, putting a roundabout in here and addressing the Scranton Avenue intersectional problems?
Whatever improvements we were able, we will be able to make in the short term, which would not be to build this in the short term, um, we would, we would probably try to do within the next year and a half or so. And then for the longer-term improvements such as this, we're going to be almost a year into design overall for both projects, and then I would say that the construction theoretically will be funded at some point in town meeting twenty seventeen for the water main. Once it starts, it'll be over with within a year, uh, and the second phase it happens, being the street improvement, will probably start hopefully, if we got through the state as far as getting in the queue, maybe twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. But that's part of the issue too, that's a very slow process, and we need this in order to initiate that with the state. We can't even have a discussion with the state at this point until we have something to go, to go through the web.
Mr. Box?
I'm, I'm fine with the rotary. I, I, the, the left turn issue, I think, you really need to be considered, what you really be doing is forcing everybody to Queen Street to King Street, and they totally not have to worry about that.
By the way, my motion does not...
I know, I just want to say, but that needs to be studied because you're going to be putting traffic into our neighborhoods, and I think just to solve a left turn problem by making it illegal is not the right way to do it.
I'm hugely against that as well, I agree.
I don't think we're heading in that direction.
Okay, I just...
That's not...
Any other comments?
Well, if it's in the plan, I was worried it just would get attached. I wanted to detach it.
No way.
All right. Any other comments, discussion?
I have a question. Is the planning board voting, or it's just selectmen?
I'd love to hear the planning board's thoughts, but I think it's actually our vote on this, but doesn't mean you can't tell us.
I'm in agreement. I like it.
Anyone from the public want to comment on this? All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. I hope that gives you the direction you need.
Thank you.
Great.
Very helpful.
And thank you very much for your report.
Thank you, Colleen.
That was a lot. Yes, thank you.
All right. Next, also some cave information on dealing with Davis Straits Planning Study.
I'm Ellen McElroy, um, I'm a planner at Cape Cod Commission, and I hope you find your agenda this morning. I have just a couple slides to review with me. So, yeah, the purpose of this meeting is really for, um, you to share your thoughts on this planning study of the commission and stones of the town of Falmouth, and, uh, just start off with a little overview of, of the scope. So, give that commission staff, we're going to do a little background research, look into your zoning, understand existing conditions, look at other studies like the man study, um, and I've been taking notes since into your discussion this morning on that. We've made one site visit, we may make others. We'll, uh, want to talk with any stakeholders and any thoughts that you might have on stakeholders we should be working with. Please let, let us know. And then we'll be looking, um, to produce a redevelopment plan, um, including recommendations to try to differentiate the Davis Straits section of town from other parts of town, improve pedestrian movement, define some character for this part of town, and encourage redevelopment. And then another part of the study is to look at a green ring at our door from Long Pond up to T-Ticket Park. We'll be analyzing some of the issues around the flood plain there and making some recommendations. I'm happy to take any thoughts you might have on that part of the, the scope as well, although I think the focus of this meeting is really to hear your thoughts on Davis Straits section of town. Timeline here is, we'd like to do our research and, and prepare some initial thoughts for a workshop in early summer. We'll try to get you some recommendations by September and get a final report to the town by the fall of this year. And I'm managing this project with the Cape Cod Commission, but other commission staff, Sarah Cordeck, who worked, um, with you on the Springbar's Road study, Leslie Richardson, the state copper, transportation engineer, and Chloe Schaefer and Shannon, planners also of the commission. So, excuse me, this is the study area. You will probably recognize everything, but, um, here is, uh, Worcester Court and Jones Road, and, um, Falmouth Heights, which we've just been talking about, is down here, Scranton Avenue is down here, Community Center is here. Um, I think you're familiar with most of the rest of it, the mall here, and, um, the shops and, uh, offices that populate, um, that section of Main Street. So, I really, I, the purpose of this meeting is to take your thoughts and for me to take wild notes, um, and have a better understanding of how you'd like to see this area, um, different from what it is today, sort of talk about uses, um, form of, of buildings along Main Street, their relationship to one another, their relationship to the street, amount of green space or lack of green space, if you imagine, in this section. Walkability, I think clearly the town is concerned about walk and pedestrian and bike accessibility, so that would be a component of this as well. And then also connections to other parts of town, important areas that are right around here, the harbor is right there, um, the community center, and perhaps there are other important, um, community amenities that you would like to make us aware of, that we should be making connections to as well. So, I've got enough of your thoughts.
First thing that comes to mind is the fact that the plaza is so far set back, those, uh, strip of buildings with the Petco and all those, where the old Stop and Shop is now Staples. So you've got this vast parking area, and I wondered if there could be, possibly reduce some of that parking and make use of the, uh, right at the edge of the roadway, in a sense, maybe extending our business redevelopment zone type of, uh, planning into that area, at least for that part of it, because it seems like wasteful, and staring at a big expansive parking lot isn't, not attractive. That was my first thought.
Mr. Jack?
Me, Jim, Bob, and I are the local comprehensive plan subcommittee of the planning board, and occasionally we kick around things like this insofar as land use goes under that rubric. And, again, like Doug said, the plaza, it's older already, ripe for redevelopment, um, would, I think, be well-used to do a walkability sort of plaza area that is, you have buildings along the backside, buildings along the front side, parking, trees, coffee shops, that kind of thing included in it with apartments above, businesses below, uh, so you get housing in there. We make it very much like we found here on Main Street. So that's one of the concerns we have, but another concern is also in that same area, we have a lot of older homes, and our concern is, when we talk about historic preservation, those older homes may or may not fall into the historic concept, but it falls under the tenor of Falmouth. Who are we as a town? If those are bought up by, say, a large, I don't know, CBS just did it, in a way. They accumulated properties there, and now we have a big box store, which fortunately, because Jim and Bob dug their heels in and said, no, it's not looking so big-boxy. But we want to keep that more, however we can do it, in a small-town look.
So, just to clarify, you'd like the, the elements that are there now, the small homes that are sort of shared businesses, and mixed there, at least that scale, and perhaps the buildings themselves?
You said it much better than I did. Thank you.
Heather?
Sam's has him up, but I'll follow him.
I would just like to advocate for the possibility of putting a communication conduit in. Uh, you know, we've got Open Cape that comes into the, uh, police department and, and the rec center right there, and on the other end, if you go around the corner to the Mullet Hall Building, I mean, we're going to need this high bandwidth internet service, and as long as we're going to be, you know, changing the streets and digging them up, I, I think we've got to put that kind of infrastructure in place so that it makes it easier for us to route these fiber optic cables and provide services in, in this area. So I think we have to be thinking ahead and at least putting in the conduit that will allow that kind of service to be provided.
Just want to thank, thank you for being here. I think this will be a really helpful process for the town. The area that I think we ought to study a little bit is the Falmouth cause, particularly at the intersection of Worcester Court and Springbar's Road, and generally in that area down Worcester Court, heading towards the more residential area, and what types of zoning or incentives that could be developed to have the buildings start to look to the street a little bit more. Because that's likely to become more of a residential area over time with other municipal objectives on Springbar's Road, uh, if there's a way that we can start doing some planning in terms of zoning changes that will result in redevelopment that's consistent with more of a integrated commercial residential scale as well.
So, your, your comments are getting at, um, differentiating Worcester Court a little bit from Davis Straits itself and making a better connection with residential.
And having the, the commercial activity relate to the street state?
Yeah.
And, and some of this sort of plays out industrial-type, I think, easily.
Jim?
Yeah, I, same area, and I think that's really important, the connection to Falmouth Heights, and the, and the Worcester Court becomes a wonderful street going through a residential neighborhood, and tried to have it become a little bit more commercial but relation to it. But I think on what Pat and Bob and I were thinking about, I'd, I'd like to study the idea of redoing the whole plaza over again, maybe coming up with something where the buildings would be totally turned around, uh, maybe even split up with the street going through, shops above them, uh, and, you know, it's on this sewer, so that's an area where we could actually do transfer of development rights from other areas, we could increase the zoning a little bit more intensely because, uh, you know, for multi, for mixed use, not for, not for all retail, but, uh, residences, right, incorporated in that, it does require those property owners to tear their buildings down and start over again, but if, we should at least study that to see if that makes sense, because that sure seems to come up in our discussions and views, that if there's something we could do over again and, and make it, the residential areas, reach out into it more and, and get rid of the big, the flat sea of pavement there, and redo the whole thing, certainly make the town a lot nicer to, to live in and...
Development is non-conforming. You always have the problem of trying to get upgrades more, more green and stuff because they come in and say, well, no, this is just up to what we already had, and you have the right to do that, it's not more detrimental, so. But I think if you're given enough incentives and, you know, you work with the owners, they will make the changes. But it'd be very frustrating, planning board, when people have all these non-conformities and they only, or the board of appeals that deals with them also, and then they want to... That's why some of the development that looks pretty crummy now is because it was redeveloped, but there was no way to make them put in more green space, and one other comment is T-Ticket used to be further down, but the Highway of Elms, so anyway, we can make enough open space, so a real tree will grow, not just some little darving...
Twig.
Twig. But I'm glad, I fully appreciate that we're working with the commission on these things, but I think between the two, I mean, that outside influence and the local influence, and the planning board is doing an excellent job, so we should get some good results. Thank you.
Yep. We are going to try to move on, we're running past our agenda.
Yep.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Anne Marie Runfola, and I dream of the day that downtown is completely closed off to traffic and hearing all of your goals for what it should look like down there with traffic for, um, parking on the side and behind, and having enough accessible spaces so people who need to be close to the buildings can get into the buildings. And we talk about having enough open space and place for trees, and we're talking about cafes and having more chairs out in front. Nothing better than having our downtown completely closed off, having places for people to drive around, and even the bicycles to go around as well, to being a very welcoming area in the downtown. So I'd like to keep that on our radar, and also echo what Alison said about opening up this plan all the way to downtown, including the part that we already love, what could be even better. Thank you.
All right, our next item is coastal resiliency. Uh, we have the goals and policies that we voted at the November two thousand and fourteen town meeting, and we also have a handout, um, distributed from the planning board. Really, the idea of having this on our agenda is make sure that we continually have it on our mind. I'm not sure we're going to solve all the problems today, but, uh, for Doug's sake, make sure that we don't ever forget that we need to always be aware of this, and, um, so is there something specific you'd like us to?
Yes. So, in my mind, our most vulnerable piece of coastline that we should consider protecting is Surf Drive. We've got a huge investment in sewer line there, a bike path, that is pretty important, as we've heard. I don't think it would be a huge, uh, undertaking to consider just that little stretch, maybe from Nobbska to Falmouth Harbor entrance. If you look at this handout that Pat has passed around, this is a planning study that's going on in New York, protecting the south coast of, uh, Long Island, which sticks out very similar to the way Woods Hole sticks out into the ocean. Just a simple breakwater off the coast, possibly from, um, Nobbska Point over to where, near where Falmouth Harbor is, just something to consider for long range. I'm not saying we can do it today, but we should be looking at these things and discussing it. So at our last meeting... So at our last meeting, I made a motion for a future agenda item, to have a meeting with the Conservation Commission, to explore two possibilities, one, starting conversation about potential for a breakwater, and another, more immediate, is maybe some way of putting a plan in place to protect the bike path, to begin with, that stretch of bike path. I spoke with Mr. McConity about the fact that in the past, they've used these sheets like vinyl or plastic, or some kind of sheets, that they protected the roadway in Great Bay, you know, near the coast there, and those are holding up well. Maybe that's something that could be implemented, I have no idea what we'll come up with, but the beginning is, after reading the planner's handbook of how the procedure should be done, whenever there's an initiative that involves a coastal area where the conservation has jurisdiction, planning board should start with the conservation department and bring the discussion up, see what's possible and what can be done, then bring it back to selectmen for decisions. So I'd like to start that process, and we've already discussed having a future agenda meeting with the Conservation Commission, and that's where we're starting.
Because one of my problems, I understand, with the bike path is the only repair they can do is as-is.
Correct.
There's nothing, no improvement they can ever do without permission from the Concom, unless we change the regulations.
Unless we come to agreement with Concom of what is acceptable for repairs and have a plan in place. So if we could come up with a plan, that would be acceptable, maybe the sheeting would protect the bike path, maybe it would also protect Surf Drive Road, because it's the same thing there, it's in that jurisdiction, so they only replace in kind. And who knows what that plan could come out to be, but we should have a plan, because when we look at our goals for coastal resiliency, one of the main things is to be able to rebound quickly. So perhaps if we had that sheeting in place, it would protect the asphalt only, maybe the sides would be all washed up and we'd have a big mess, but we could still get around, and we'd have less expense to replace every time.
As, you know, another way to look at that, and, you know, terrific ideas, the, through the 209 plan, the Cape Cod Water Collaborative is, in fact, just this past week, we had a presentation on the living reef in Wealthlea. And there is currently a study, it's been going on for about 10 years, there is a team from UMass Boston that has been working with exactly that concept. So in terms of progress in tools and ways to bring that piece of the agenda forward, the 209 plan will have some sort of, you know, tried and true recommendations as time goes forward. So this sort of coastal resiliency element, you know, would fit right in there, and I, you know, I think there will be financing probably available, grants coming along, but that would be something to look at as well, just really locally, as to what the, you know, in the oysters, how, you know, they have really been a natural protection for Wealthlea, and how Wealthlea is really trying to bring that back, and, you know, look at how effective that is in this day and age, so fits right in.
Great. Bob?
Our first policy in the element, the coastal resiliency element is, Falmouth shall preserve, restore and enhance coastal ecosystems to better absorb impacts. We've learned from studying Sandy, this is just a partial bit of literature that I've gone through, as well as the other members on the board, and we've been looking at New Jersey and New York, dealing with the aftermath of Sandy, and some of the lessons are, natural ecosystems are the best way of absorbing impacts and preventing large amounts of damage. Those places along the Jersey Shore that had sand dunes were spared, they weren't flooded. So mechanical man-made things are not the answer, we need to do things like living reefs, we need to restore our wetlands, they're real shock absorbers, we have got all these finger ponds that run out to the ocean, those are natural absorption areas for storm impact, and we also need to look at some regulations as well. Chatham has had a conservancy district bylaw which prevents things like filling of land, draining of land, construction of residential units, or use of household barges in these areas, building of any structure in the velocity of the V1 through 30 zones. I mean, these are types of things that we need to be looking at in Falmouth, and as a town, we need to take the lead in that if we want to expect people, the general public to accept some of the things that we want to do, we need to be a leader in that. So I would recommend that we follow Chatham's lead in this, and it has been upheld by the State Supreme Court, so that's something that we should look into.
The concern that I have that underlies all of my thinking is that we are all guilty of crisis management. This is what happens, we wait like Katrina, they knew what was going to happen, they had plenty of forecasts even before that happened, but they waited until it became a crisis. And even now, I suspect funds are being diverted elsewhere instead of taking care of what they have to. I don't want Falmouth to become a crisis. Our water temperature out there in the ocean is, I believe I read, 4.6 degrees higher this winter than it has been previously. And the old mariners knew, when you get warm water, you get bad weather coming in. Now, what we learned from Sandy is that the government steps up, if you have shovel-ready projects to do, I would appeal that we start planning ahead with what we could call a shovel-ready project of a living reef. It's there if the funding becomes available, in any way that it becomes available. Bob grew up in Winthrop, where now they're worrying about too much sand, because they built something like this, and it has accumulated sand. We could stand too much sand on those beaches right now, because it's washed away in the 40 odd years I've lived here. So I would appeal that the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, and the Conservation Commission get together and start working now on a shovel-ready plan for a living reef out there to help us.
Sam?
There is actually a complementary initiative, actually it's been around for quite some time on the federal level, and we have a Barstow County Extension Agent that's actually here, a supportist in it, and it's in the form of Shannon Jarboe, and she's trying to promote the use of a community rating system, which ultimately results in deductions on flood insurance to homeowners. And I was at a workshop that she put on just a couple of weeks ago, and it turns out that our homeowners could actually be saving up to $330 per year, just if the community, through its flood mitigation preparation, qualifies for those kinds of deductions. And it's been around a long time, it's self-serving, and that the National Flood Insurance Program is trying to cut down on the number of claims, and there are some $18 million in the hole nationally, and so this was a program, but we've got an article, actually, on the town, this April town meeting, to bring in a consultant to help us finish up some of the things that we need to do to qualify to actually participate in that program. One of them is a hazard mitigation plan, which we rolled out in draft form a year and a half ago, and we haven't moved forward on it. But I mean, it fits into all of this kind of planning, where we're looking at the kinds of infrastructure that we could put in, or the changes in infrastructure that are required to make us more resilient to coastal flooding. So I, you know, I think this all comes together, and there is some incentives to even, you know, personal property owners, if we can start qualifying for this program. And we have a local person here to actually facilitate this and act as a consultant for us, it's not going to even cost us anything. So I would just encourage us to continue to push forward and expedite our efforts so we can bring all of this together and benefit our citizens.
I think something else that we may have to look at at a county level is, the county has, what, one or two dredges that services, and the, one, for the, for a long stretch of coastline, and I think we need to look into having more dredges. If you go to places like the Outer Banks in North Carolina, you always see a dredger working, because the sands are always shifting there. And we need to be able to pump sand back that gets washed out, and we've talked about how Nobbska used to be the source of sand for nourishing all the beaches further east, and since that's been armed, those beaches just get eroded, because what sand is there just gets washed out. All that sand is right out there, it isn't like we have to truck it in from someplace. So we need to look at having one or two dredges that are going to service this coast. And we have snowplows for snow, I don't know why we don't have a dredger for sand to maintain our beaches, because like Sam says, it is something that if we can mitigate the hazard, everybody knows about flood insurance now and what that's costing and the havoc it's with concern about all these houses being raised up to avoid the flood insurance rates. So if we could mitigate that somehow, and I think a simple solution would be just to have more dredges so that we could constantly re-nourish the beaches.
One way to implement that, in fact, that came up at the Cape Cod Municipal Association meeting this week, we're all the representatives, and Senator Dan Wolf was there as well, in terms of sharing that kind of municipal, you know, almost infrastructure kind of expenditures. And the, so we're looking at doing that in term, in, you know, coordinated efforts, memorandums of understanding between communities, and in terms of what the most advantageous projects would be, so that certainly is an agenda item that can be brought forward, that makes perfect sense.
And I know the pushback is, "Oh, well, the sand just washes away anywhere," and they just dredged the mouth of the Cape Cod Canal, pumped it up on the beaches and sandwiched everybody after the storm, said, "Oh, all the sand washed away." Nobody thought about if that sand hadn't been there, what damage would have happened. So we need to consider this.
So should we have our next straight meeting with the Conservation Commission as our starting point?
Well, I, like I said, I read the planner's handbook to see what's the proper procedure, and it seems as if the planning board should meet with the conservation and kind of come to agreement, and then come back, so we're not wasting too much of your time, and come back once we've developed a plan or something that you could consider.
Okay.
If that makes sense, I think that's the way to go.
I think we'd be very supportive getting some recommendations along those lines.
Right.
And should we try to set a timetable for our next meeting then?
I'm not worried about coming up with topics, I'm sure we will come up with those. We already have a bunch on that.
One thing that didn't make our agenda today, can we just make mention that we have distributed our draft of the accessory apartment, and hope you're reading it, it's not for today, but just wanted to make a note that it's out there.
Okay. And so that it's on the website of the planning board?
I believe so.
It is.
Great, for the accessory, and we expect to have that at the November town meeting.
Would that be too early?
No.
We should be ready.
We're on line for November.
Great.
Sure, good. I just had a suggestion for an agenda item, remember at the, I guess it was the last town meeting, the zoning board of appeals asked for some review and changes, so I don't have it in front of me, but I wonder if we could take a look at that in terms of, I don't remember the book.
Rewriting the book?
Or just looking at specific, maybe a dialogue about what the biggest concerns are? Thank you.
Here, we have a fine-tuning, we put that as an agenda item.
Yeah, helping them do their job in terms, you know, because that was their request for some assistance.
Right, that is a good one.
Jim, did you have?
Well, I just wanted to, I actually thought that we were going to be talking about the accessory apartment, I'm all set, because we're going to, it's not in this town meeting, but I would like you, if you could, Doug, I sent you a clip to the FCTV, gave us a summary, a time for us to have an internal discussion, but we discussed all the issues, and I think it's a, it's a good primer for people to look at, if your board could see it. All we do is say, "These are all the questions that the town needs to answer together." We're not taking an opinion one way or the other, we just call them out, and I'd like you to, I mean, you can read it, but watching the discussion, I think, will trigger more thought process.
So certainly if we could all do that before we have our joint meeting.
Right, that's what I was encouraging you.
And I guess another item would be multifamily housing, we'll be ready to discuss that probably by the next joint meeting, would that be realistic?
Yes, we should start talking about it then, yeah.
We put that under the umbrella of housing, accessory apartments and multifamily.
And the conversion bylaw should be added as a component, too, that's really a three-pronged approach.
So I guess housing would be?
The housing would be the comment, right.
Be the agenda item.
Would September be too far away to have our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
The reason being is that we will, we have the transportation element ready to go, we're waiting on your approval. We will have the historical element, I believe, very quickly, ready to go. And those are the last two elements for the comprehensive plan. If we get approval, then we can take it to town meeting, and September gets a little late, in case there are some changes, to take it to town meeting.
July?
It's got to be after the election, right? So it's, what's the window? June, June or July, we're looking at, right?
Typically, June, we'll be having our strategic meeting.
Okay.
So then, it sounds like it's July.
We'll find some time in July.
Enjoying the air conditioning.
Works well in this room.
All right, any other items to come up today?
I guess, the transportation planning, we'll be talking about that again, because that'll be moving forward now.
We got it.
So have accessory, multifamily, housing in general, we're going to keep coastal resiliency on it, maybe?
Maybe we'll have something to report to you.
Right. And in addition, the transportation element for the file approval. Entertained motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All those favor, more selectmen? All right?
Planning board?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.